Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Kate Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Dece Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
And Tom Wensel's absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next, we have agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the Order of Business November 27, 2018, Regular Meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council with the addition of 11A, Second Reading of Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendment 111808, C-3 District Automobile and Vehicle Dealership Separation Requirements as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Anybody need a copy of 11A?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, we got it.
I think we all had an original one. We had the original.
You're doing that, but, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Remember, the mayor, are we adding the thing for the audit?
Yeah, that's what she just did.
Okay, good.
Does the Clerk's office need 11A?
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
11A was the second reading, but I think what Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, she mentioned the approval of the audit would be twelve, under 12, right?
Twelve A.
Yeah, we were going to wrap it into 12A.
Okay.
The summary and approval.
And approval, yeah.
It's by motion, move to motion, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. These are the minutes from the regular meeting of November 13, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we approve the minutes from the November 13, 2018, Regular Meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearings and comment on agenda items only. This is on our agenda tonight, and it's two-minute limit. Step up to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, no comments tonight? Let's move on then. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that council approve 6-1 through 6-22 as outlined.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I have a few questions or comments, if you don't mind, please.
Sure.
First one is on 6-19. It's for the Police Department Tire Discount House. There's a invoice here that doesn't tell us what vehicle it is. They skip telling us the car number, and I know it's one of our cars, but what I would like to see is that make sure that they put down the vehicle identification on them. That's just a comment and an observation that I seen. And another one, there was an invoice of, on 10-22, invoice 006835, was the one with no unit number on it. And invoice number 39272 and 39273, they're for the same car on the same day for the same repair. And it's two different. Mountain balance on both of them, and we got charged for both, one for 32 and one for 16. They were for the same vehicles.
Yeah, check your 15.
So I don't know what that is, if that was just something that had to, an oversight, or I don't understand what it is.
Well, we'll look for some clarification on, it appears to have been mountain balance, three tires. So we bring in the tires.
Yes, I understand, but I don't know if it's, I mean, it's the same car, would they just comp it all together?
I'll look.
And it does say two and one, so I was just curious on that. And that's what I had for.
One of the explanations, the captain just informed me, was that they did the two tires, they brought it back and realized the third tire needed to be replaced.
That makes sense.
Okay.
And then, my next one is 6-20 and 6-21, the way trim. I've got really nothing about all of the things here, but the one at 6-21 is road repair. And I've yet to see Haas get done, or Lewis Manner get done, and here we are, we're in December, the weather's freezing. Do we, have we still kept the money back?
The money's been, the road payment, he's going to do that first thing this spring, with the winter, with the early winter coming, and he'll do that before it does.
I want to make sure that gets done, because that's, you know, Haas was a lot of money, and so is Lewis Manner.
More money in your game than the value of the work.
Okay, so I'm going to make a note here that this is going to, and Lewis Manner's also going to be in the spring?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Again, I have the same concerns as the last few, with another company cutting city grass, and same issue also with the sewer cleaning, so, I mean, just keep asking the same questions.
Did you want to answer?
No, I don't think we're going to get an answer, so there's no, I mean, we have, not, most of these companies, there's, I haven't seen an RFP for work, and they're popping in on these invoices, one after the other.
I know, that's a lot of money, too.
So, I'm going to be voting no on these again, so.
Fifty-two thousand, I think, is the sidewalk program.
Oh, sidewalk, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize on that.
No, you're talking about.
Six, I think, 6 and 7, six minutes submitted for the last meeting, that's why you're seeing the higher number, because 6, 7, and 8 are all included. And that should be the last, and we won't see any more invoices with the AR.
Because I don't see an amount budgeted before the payment on this sidewalk and weed. Is there a budget for that?
It's a revolving account for the sidewalks. Residents pay for the amount.
That's true, yes, okay. All right. Any further questions?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey's opposed, and so am I. Next, we have consideration of the bids. We have Treasurer Riley, Approval of Demol Fire Truck and Rescue Squad Financing Bid.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move City Council approve the attached Resolution Authorizing Installment Purchase Agreement drafted by Miller Canfield, approving the term and condition of the low bidder, Comerica Bank, for the fire, aerial truck, and rescue squad as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Volta Torney, Request for Bids, Police Department Command Desk and Roll Call Area's Flooring Replacement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Dan Volta Torney. Oh, I thought somebody said something. I got it right?
We're trying.
Got the Italian twist to it.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm working on this. Respectfully requesting bits to go out for the following equipment by specification. These items will be paid with capital outlay funds. The flooring being replaced is worn and stained, and attached to the specifications for this project is outlined in Item 7B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
That being in a Tifa district, couldn't we get Tifa funds for that?
Well, I'll look into it. It didn't occur to check, so I'll check with.
It'd be worth a shot at it.
It will be, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from Mayor. Communication Regarding Landfill Surcharge.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the City Council adopt the resolution to oppose the proposal by Governor Schneider to increase the surcharge on landfill by the State of Michigan from .36 per ton to $4.44 per ton. This is a result in anticipated increase in our sanitary disposal fees annually of $91,853.04, which comes out of our city's general fund. I ask that we include Mayor Dan Piletko, City Treasurer John Riley, and City Clerk Prochevitz, if interested, to join on record to oppose increasing the state of Michigan on surcharge fee for landfills. In addition, further request that this be forwarded to notify Governor Schneider, Senator David Kneecik, State Representative Jewel Jones, and State Representative Frank Liberati of our opposition as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I believe all the council people should be included on that, too, just to, just to make sure that they know that we're well aware of it.
We certainly would want that, and the City Treasurer has, wants his name on that, and I read in the paper, it might even go higher than this.
Oh, no.
If they want to stop the stuff coming in from Canada, just charge them.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next, you're welcome. Next, under Reports from City Officials, we have Human Resources Director Sabota Perry, Agreement with Nihart for Interim GASB 45 Report.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with Department Head Elizabeth Sabota Perry, requesting mayoral concurrence and the City Council's approval to engage in a contractual relationship between the City of Dearborn Heights and Nihart Company. The State of Michigan requires that we have an actuarial projection valuation, which illustrates how we will reach the 40% funded ratio for the city's corrective action plan as outlined in Item 9A.
Support. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I have a question. I know it was discussed a couple of months back, that we had Plant Moran. We budgeted an amount of money that, it says that for GASB 75 study as well, so I'd like to find out what's, what's the difference between what was allocated in the past for Plant Moran and this company.
Would you like to come up and answer that for us, please?
Well, this doesn't go to Plant Moran.
Yeah, it's, there's two different. Yeah, there's two different pieces. So what Plant Moran presented on tonight was our GASB 75, and that gives the total liability we're required by general accounting standards.
I'm sorry, let me rephrase my question. So there was money that was allocated, let me see, it was $7,000, $7,915 that was approved by the council on August 28. And now we have this company for a lesser amount, so what's, what's the difference between that amount?
One was for Plant Moran, sir, and then the other one is for Nihart, or they were both Nihart?
No, no, one for Plant Moran, for $7,915.
Brian submitting our response, Public Act 202. This is for the actuarial report that goes into the Public Act 202 report.
Okay. On, on the invoice that was dated back to August 28, 2018, it says professional services performed associated with GASB 75 implementation, $7,915. Okay, so.
Go ahead.
That is for Plant Moran's work on getting the GASB 75 on the financial statement. Nihart is just the one that's the actuary that's helping us get the numbers to put on the financial statement. So it's two different consultants, same thing, but two different sides of this big project.
If I can add a little bit?
Sure, go ahead.
The August 28 invoice would have been putting the liability on the statements, but also working with the actuary to get the assumptions adjusted, making sure that the assumptions made sense for whether it's mortality payments, whether it's the increases in the benefits over time due to inflation, things like that. So there were numerous calls and meetings, et cetera, that were required to do that, and ultimately, we worked with the Controller's Office to make sure that the adjustments and the records reflected all the accurate numbers, once those discussions took place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Volta Torney, Digital Recording System for the 911 System, Approval of Payment.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Police Chief Dan Volta Torney, Approval of Payment to Equiture DSS Corporation. The amount is $5,432 as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I just want to say, I've read the back of this, and I like reading this. Maintenance agreement includes software updates and support, telephone, remote, desktop streaming support, all labor, all parts, priority service. I like that, all labor and all parts thing.
I do, too. We don't see that a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Volta Torney, Speed Awareness System Request to Purchase and Pay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the purchase and payment for the speed awareness system with traffic data collector as outlined in 9C. Total cost of $10,008.07, as, again, as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
So, it says here that there was eight requests. Which areas were they requested for, like any particular area or street?
Well, there was one request for the area by Burrow Senior Center. Councilman Muscat worked with, or talked with our traffic unit about some areas where he had some concerns. There are various areas, as far as the eight specific ones, I don't know.
I guess my concern, would it be specific to those eight areas? Because we get calls from a lot of residents that they're having issues in their neighborhoods as well.
So now we have, with the purchase of this, we'll have a tool to put in that area to gather our data, gather the speed, and do something, do some enforcement. Prior to that, we had to send an officer there to monitor it. We had older equipment that is collecting rust in the parking lot, so with this new equipment, we'll be able to do some enforcement action.
No, it's a great idea, actually. Also, those slow traffic just for the equipment being present. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
So I had a question for Chief Volta Torney also. We're only purchasing one, I'm just curious, just logically, I mean, ideally, wouldn't, would you rather not, not would you rather not have, but is it more ideal for you guys to have two, or possibly even three?
If you have more money, well, if you personally have more money.
Yeah.
Other than coming out of my budget, we'd gladly have to take more equipment.
Okay.
That's the issue.
Okay, because I've seen these, and I know it's effective, because you'll see people driving, and suddenly you'll see everybody slow down when they, when these come up.
Right, I mean, there's, Captain Myers worked on this project as people were, you know, instrumental in getting it, in giving the proposal. There's different levels of equipment available. We're considering adding on to this platform different options, or purchasing additional equipment, so it's, it's a work in progress.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gladly take any money you have for it.
You got it.
Write the check.
Yep, you got it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Public Service Administrator Zimmer, MSDS Online Material Safety Data Sheets, Request to Pay and Permission to Sign on Behalf of the City.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
We concur with our Public Service Administrator, Bill Zimmer, and accept the quote for the proposal for MSD online to provide the information needed by OSHA. The amount of the quote is $2,080 as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have ordinance and resolution. This is what we put back in. It's the Second Reading of Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendment, H-18-08 for the C-3 District Automobile and Vehicle Dealership Separation Requirements.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the ordinance be read for the second time, as outlined in 11A, ordinance number H-18-08.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
For, we had in one of the study sessions, I don't know whether the concern was police vehicles, are we?
This is not that. Okay. This would allow the gentleman that's.
The automobile dealership.
Open up a used car because he's prohibited with 1,000 feet, because there's one in Detroit. This would restrict it to our geographical.
Right, okay.
Or, for example, like Van Born.
Councilman Coniston.
Like, the one side of Van Born is all, yeah, Taylor is all car dealership.
Okay.
Council Chair, if I may just recommend also, be read for the second time, and effective upon appropriate publication.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, at this time, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Communications from Plant Moran, PLLC, Proposed Maximum Fee Summary for the Audit, and also the Approval of the Audit.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Proposed Maximum Fee Summary for the Audit of Funds Listed for the Year Ending June 30, 2019, to be paid in the fiscal year 2019-2020, as well as accept the Audit Report and forward the Audit Report to the State of Michigan as outlined in 12A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under New Business, we have Business License Renewal for Mexican Fiesta Located at 24310 Ford Road. We also have Rouge Park Inn Located at 16515 Outer Drive, and Van Born Tavern and Grill at 22426 Van Born.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we approve the Business License Renewals for Mexican Fiesta, Rouge Park Inn, and Van Born Tavern and Grill as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Members of the Public. At this time, we're going to open up for comments from council members. Before anybody else goes, I'd like to say Councilman Wensel is missing tonight because his mother passed away, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Any other comments from council members?
Council Chair. I have one, one item that I'd like to bring back. Back in 9/25/18, we had Agenda Item 618 at Johnson Controls for $6,014.84. And approximately $3,290 of that was for a repair done while they were installing the equipment. And we referred it back to the administration, and I never heard back what happened with that amount of money. Did we even pay the total amount of $6,014, or did we hold back any money for the damages that were caused during installation?
Okay.
And my consent was, why do we pay for something that?
Okay, I believe that was Mr. Blackburn, right?
I believe so.
That was who we had addressed it to before. Did you have an answer for us on this?
Well, the rooftop that was put in was not put in by Johnson Controls. When Johnson Controls went to hook up for the computer system, that's when they had found the, the wire snipped. They had replaced it. The amount, the 3200 had nothing to do with them fixing the wire, it's just one of the jobs they did. All the labor was for the computer techs, because they not only did the work for the, for the rooftop there, they also had to do other computer work for another rooftop at another office. And that invoice was paid in October, it was on the agenda, and you guys had approved it.
So are you saying that the damage was caused by the roofing company and not by Johnson?
No, the, the broken wire was caused by the contractor who put in the, the rooftop unit.
Right, and so that, what was the charge to repair that?
To repair that wire was no charge, because for Johnson Controls, with the service agreement we have, they, we have built-in hours that they had to spend here doing work anyway, so they fixed it in those block hours. That didn't cost us any money. The labor charges you see were for the computer techs to, to get the rooftop to talk to the computer system. And they had, not only did they do the mayor's office, because that's where the rooftop went, they also had to do a bunch of computer changing to the treasurer's office, too.
Okay.
So the labor charges you see is all the, the computer techs, it wasn't the maintenance tech.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn.
Any further comments from council members?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I was going to actually address an issue, but the business owner's here, so he can probably speak to it a lot better than I can.
We can do it during open.
It's actually, it's a lengthy process. They have an issue with some city, with city property, they have a tree that is going on his property and is damaging his, his fence or his wall, so.
Okay, go ahead.
We own the property, Blumun Hookah Lounge and Timas Kitchen.
Name and address, please. Can you give us your name?
Your name and address, and it's three minutes.
Okay. My name is Salim Sabag, 6125 North Telegraph, Timas Kitchen and Blumun Hookah Lounge, right on the corner of the.
Oh, I know where that's at, okay.
Thank you. We have a problem with the property, the vacant property that belongs to the city, right behind my property. Now, there's been trees growing up, I did so many attempts for the city to come and cut them. Finally, I was able to get hold of Bob, the city mayor, and he sent a team, and they cut the trees. The problem is the, it was done so late that the, the wall, it's a concrete wall, it's bending, it's cracking, and it's going to fall anytime. We need to do something about this. At the same time, I'm very interested in purchasing or renting, or any way I can get that property. This way, we don't have to go through repairing the whole wall or replacing it, which is going to cost a lot of money, and at the same time, I can use that piece property for parking.
Mr. Mayor.
I have researched this, I've talked to two or three representatives that have come on your behalf, and Mayburn is a dedicated street that runs right through. There is no street there now, but it is dedicated and exists. So that street would have to be vacated or abandoned.
Abandoned.
And the problem is that I went further and down into DPW, because I was tipped off by one of the employees, a long-time employee, that there is a major water line that runs a little bit north, I guess, or no, be a little bit west of the air wall.
West, yes.
And we cannot allow somebody to build on that particular property because of that significant water line. It is not a local water line, it's, it's a huge one.
It's the water line that we used to get the water for the fire marshaled at that time. We ran a six-inch pipe, I believe, yes.
But that line is bigger than six inches, and it runs north and covers a significant area. So, that's the two barriers. And it's the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Employees and the DPW that we do not sell that property because of the fact, well, one, we have to go through, and I've indicated, and the city would not recommend the vacation or abandonment of that particular street. I'm not sure it's ever going to go through, but nevertheless, it would not be a recommendation because of that water line. The other problem you have with that property is, no one can build where your parking lot is off a telegraph, not where the building is, but parking lot. If you notice, when you drive down telegraph, there's that big dip. There's Bill's Drain that runs through there, and it runs all the way into the cemetery and beyond. That is a huge drain, so that now becomes another restriction in order. And, I mean, it's unfortunate, it looks like there's nothing there, but there's a lot of stuff underneath the ground.
Okay, and it's not going to work even for a parking lot, like only cars park, we're not going to build anything up there.
Well, I'm just telling you, it is not the recommendation of the DPW to abandon that, vacate it at all, because we need access. If that water line was to ever break, or the drain was to collapse, it's a major undertaking. And so, that's why we didn't push it forward.
Okay.
I indicated to, you had a couple of real estate agents, Lee, come to see me, and I said, "Well, you'd have to put it in writing, you can request that we abandon and vacate, but I'm going to tell you right now, the city's going to recommend to the council we do not, we not do that because of the water line and the drain."
Councilman Abdullah.
Mr. Mayor, what if, I'm just curious, just as an extra revenue source for the city, what if we were to hypothetically, and I'm not, we don't really get into specifics, but hypothetically, a 20-year lease to the gentleman, with our city still having access to that particular property in the event something needed to be done, at which point, if we did have access to it and it has to be re-repaired, again, this would have to be negotiated, maybe possibly the organization can take it on again to re-repair it again. So, we'd have access, we'd provide a service to that, and then this, we wouldn't have to maintain it as far as cotton grass and what have you. Is that an option? Similar to what Ford Motor Company does with 100-year lease, like for example, Andi Amos has 100-year lease on that property, which is owned by Ford, just hypothetically.
Here was the thought process, although I don't think it would be favorable, and I lived on Mayburn at one time, and I wouldn't necessarily want this, but if you get past Mayburn Dedicated Street, there's still some property. If he acquired that particular property, could make it into a parking lot, although I'm not sure that the plant commission's going to accept that, because you have that apartment complex now.
Right.
But I think you have to leave that Mayburn, I'm not sure we're ever going to extend the street through, but that would be an easier solution than ask the city to abandon or vacate. The reason is that those decisions cannot be revoked.
No, I'm talking about leasing it.
Leasing it.
Not selling it, leasing it.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't, a lease would be just as legally binding. I mean, I'm not sure that it would necessarily help under the circumstances to end up having a lease for a property that the city needs to potentially have access to, and then you potentially have a parking lot on it, which is a development, and then you need to end up dealing with a drain or other issue that would be a permanent structure that would be put there. And then it would potentially fall on the city to end up having to deal with that in the future.
But the details have to be worked out, I'm just saying, on an asphalt parking lot, it'd be no different than a street, which we do work on, we rip out the street and do whatever work we need to do as a city. Again, I'm just saying, just as an option, if it was available.
It's just like having an easement in our backyard.
For utilities, yes.
If he would te-lease it with the clause, with the clause that we can, that the city can go in there to repair when they need to without even any warnings. I mean, he'd have to be, you know, things negotiated, and he'd have to be okay with it, and I don't see a problem with that with a lease, but then, again, there's legal legalities involved in it, and it's not, for me, I'm just thinking out loud and giving you my idea.
We can get into the details later, I guess. Okay, is there...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any more comments from council members?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
The recreational marijuana ballot initiative passed, and our city, like many other cities, is faced with opting in or opting out of the various uses that are allowed under the medical marijuana law. So, I know Dearborn has opted out, I've had some discussion with some of the council That type of use, from a business standpoint, how it would affect adjoining business areas, adjoining businesses is a concern for me. So, I know Steve Roberts said that we were going to...
Mark Roberts.
Mark Roberts.
He wrote up a ordinance, we didn't get it till Monday, and there's been so many changes to the agenda, that I didn't want to suggest one more, but it's not, it'll be put on, I assume you got a copy of it.
I got a copy, I may need to make some suggested tweaks to it.
Yeah, the one thing he needs to change, definitely, in the front, it goes, it says Oakland County.
I know.
You caught that?
I caught that.
So, he didn't clear the word process earlier.
Yeah.
But I would expect it to be on your December, your next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from council members?
Madam Chair. I was going to refer to the mayor, but I will start us off, and the mayor, you can certainly jump in. So, I wanted to bring attention to Sunday, November 25th, American Human Rights Council, that was a dedicated day to increase awareness, to ending violence against women. And as you recall, July 2018, there was an ordinance that established Commission on Women and Girls was passed by this body. And with that, there were some conversations happening, and actually, quite a few people came forward and said they would be interested. And so, I wanted to make an announcement, the mayor would chime in as well, if you would, sir, to make sure interested individuals would submit a letter of interest directly to your office, so that way, that can be reviewed, and hopefully, that commission could become active. So, I will now refer to you.
I'm looking for individuals that would like to serve on the Women's Commission. Besides a letter of request, I'd also ask for some kind of resume and a way that we can contact you. Right after the ordinance passed, two individuals corresponded with me, I got back to them, thanking them for their volunteer, and then I mentioned to both of them that so far, I was lacking the proper number that the ordinance called for. I think they got a friend of theirs, I got a third one, like, within a month, and I've received absolutely no additional, except for last week, and it might have been in connection with this, but four is not sufficient, I need more, I need some people to volunteer, and then we would come back. That's the only thing that's been holding it up.
And I appreciate that, and I just want to say to individuals who are interested, definitely submit that to the mayor's office. This is a really, you know, all of our commissions are really important, we count on our residents to volunteer for these commissions in the various capacities. This one in particular, this commission, is really one of the first of its kind in the state of Michigan. So, it's really a very good thing, and it addresses, or will have the capacity of addressing several issues, whether it's, you know, leadership for women, not just women, but all issues, you know, health, education, so I would definitely encourage you to do that, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor?
Hi, Mike. I had the honor today to go over to Robishard High School, and there's an item or a group, Students for Peace, Code 22, and I got a T-shirt, and it was sponsored, I got a grant from Ford UAW, and they're in competition with Ecorus High School, and the whole plan on it is to reduce violence, not to get into fighting, but to be civil and work your way out of disputes. And Robishard was presented with the trophy, it's a trophy that goes month to month to either school, and the UAW paid for pizza for all the kids. I was given the honor of presenting to the student body the trophy, but it is a great program, and the students are running it themselves. And so consequently, the peer pressure, and there has been such a reduction in the amount of violence and fights, and what happens is, they get points for doing positive things, and if they have a fight in the school, they lose 220 points. And so, it becomes very competitive, but Robishard, the Bulldogs, and Pride and the Bulldogs, they beat Ecorus, and they showed me today that they're intending to keep that trophy, but more importantly, the students are saying, "We're going to handle disputes in a civil way, we're not going to go to fisticuffs, and we're not going to use guns and stuff." So, congratulations to Robishard, the superintendent, and the principal there, and all the student body. Great program. Go Bulldogs.
Okay, any other comments from council members? Next, we will open it up to public comment in regards to the city, I mean, announcements, public announcements.
Chief.
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. I just wanted to remind everybody that this coming weekend is Goodfellow, so you'll see people out at the corners again on Friday and Saturday, Saturday all day long. This is our, the 90th anniversary of the Dearborn Heights Goodfellow, so that's something to really be proud of, that's a long, long time of, no kid without a Christmas, that's the logo, so please be generous, be careful out driving, no texting and driving, we don't want anyone getting hurt out there. And once again, it's for a great cause, 100% of the money goes back into the community through food and gifts for kids for Christmas, so keep your eyes open this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public announcements? Commissioner Webb?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, this opportunity, I just want to follow up on Make a Senior Smile Day, and it's just a perfect segue, having the fire chief having just been up here, because I want to send out special thanks to your police and fire chief, retired, recently retiredly Gavin, and I've already been introduced to your new fire chief, so, I mean, your new police chief, so he knows that he's signing up for Make a Senior Smile Day next year, but we did, we actually had 39 volunteers come out and rake leaves for 27 seniors and disabled veterans in the city of Dearborn Heights who couldn't afford, you know, to pay someone else to do it. So, it was pretty awesome, I think we gathered 350 bags of leaves, and it was 24 degrees that morning, so these folks were really diehards to come out, got to do a special thanks to the master gardeners that come out every year, and your garbage hauler, GFL, came through in the clutches, too, and gave us 10 guys to work all day without costing us, so they donated on behalf of the city. So, that's the kind of people you want to do business with, are the people who give back to your community. So, I definitely had to put the plug in for them, but, you know, we had that cold snap the day before, actually, the morning before, it was snowing, I'm sitting there thinking, "Oh, wonderful, it's snowing, how are we going to rake leaves?" It melted, it was like, you know, God's work, it melted, the next day, it was cold, but it was dry, and we were able to get all the volunteers out and do this, and normally, houses that we had 10 or 15 bags of leaves, we would have 30, 40 bags of leaves because of the cold weather brought all the leaves down. So, huge shout out to the police and fire, because they came out and bailed us. So, your own firefighters and your own police officers saved the day that day for your seniors, we would have never been able to finish without them, so I just want to say huge kudos to them. Thank you very much for, you know, helping us help your seniors and your disabled vets. That's all I have, thank you. And if I don't see you guys before the holidays, happy holidays.
Thank you for what you did, putting this together, the thanks and the kudos go to you.
Wow, thank you, and, oh, and I can't, I gotta be, I don't want to be remiss to say, you know, you guys always let us use the Eaton Center, the mayor always lets us use the Eaton Center as a staging for this event, we couldn't do it if we didn't have that, so thank you. And your director over there, Christian Rockinsus, and your seniors, Barth Bucelli and Linda Mahaney, they come out and volunteer their time, open up early, get the coffee going for the volunteers, it's just awesome to work with you, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Coniston from the Recreation Department. First thing I'm, like, passing around is, we have our Ski and Snowboard Club starting up in December, our last week in December is our first trip, so I'm not going to go through all of this, but I just wanted to let you know, this is an example of a brochure that we do in-house, that's an actual photo that I took, as well as I did all of the design work and all of the information in it, and we did the printing in-house, too, with our printer that we have, so that's one of the ways that the Parks and Recreation Department is really looking to save money. Also, I want to remind the residents, as well as the council, that we have our tree lighting ceremony next week, Tuesday night, starting at 6:30 PM, and we've got a lot of new things set up for that day, so we hope that everybody can make it, and we want the residents to come out and see our special activities for that night. So, again, that's Tuesday, starting at 6:30 here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor, just want to talk about a couple of quick items at the library. First off, Santa is back once again, he will be stopping by JFK Library Tuesday, December 11th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, and at Carolyn County Library on Monday, December 17th, from 7:00 to 8:30. There will be plenty of time for photos after the program, so come on out and see Santa and all his holiday resplendence. Next, Monday, December 3rd, at 7:00 PM at Carolyn County Library, will be a program on bow making. Come on out to learn creative bow crafts from our own Sandy Martin, as she provides step-by-step instruction on how to make your own bows. Supplies will be provided, please call 313-791-3800 to register, as space is limited. Finally, Holiday Bingo will be afoot at JFK Library Tuesday, December 11th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. People of all ages are welcome to play, so come on out, have fun, and win some holiday swag. That's all for now, thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, City Council members, Director Hashem, I did receive a letter in the mail the other day, and I thought it would be interesting to share it with some of the public and along with City Council. The letter, basically, that I shared with the mayor previously, is from Vista Maria, it's addressed to the City of Dearborn Heights Department and Economic, Community and Economic Development. Basically, it's a thank you letter, it says, "You have made a difference in the lives of Vista Maria's youth. Through your grant, we will make capital improvement to our aging campus infrastructure, improving our ability to serve vulnerable youth. Your continued support helps us to provide a safe space to other programs that positively impact our youth and in turn, the whole community. We greatly appreciate the support from the City of Dearborn Heights." I thought it would be interesting. The other thing that I'd like to share is, if anybody's interested in touring the campus and seeing what these people do at that place, it is a marvelous place, I know I've been there quite a few times myself, but I was given the authorization to extend an invitation to anyone who would like to go and tour the site with the CEO of the campus, I'd be more than happy to arrange something if you would call me and let me know. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Any further announcements? At this point, we will open it up to public comment, you can come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and limited to three minutes, please. At this time, I don't see any...
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.